Okay, we're back from executive session. Sorry, we are having a little bit of technical difficulties. You know, I'm Gen X, so no, no action taken in an executive session. Go ahead.
Thank you. All right, just on coming up in a couple of weeks, it is Veterans Day. And leading up to that, NACO is doing the green light for veterans again, and KAC is joining that. So Cory and I are all for supporting that. And they still have equipment, the green paper film that went over the lights. So we would like the commission to consider allowing us to do that going green for that week again for veterans.
Do we need the lights on the panel building? Can you go there now?
Yeah. I like the candy. We'll look into it.
And maybe talk to me straight that you do. I'll look at you.
On Friday's training, we're going to talk about that tomorrow at task force. And you're going to be there, right?
Yeah.
Okay. We're going to talk about that. But out of that came a request for us to consider paying the certification for supervisors that are interested to become CPR AED certified. So I don't have a cost yet because I would have to contact a trainer and find out what their cost is. But I wanted to get your feedback to see if that was something that the commission would entertain. I think it's a wonderful idea.
Yes, I do, too.
Okay, so I will get more information, bring that back to you. On Tuesday, Wednesday, October 30th, the county clerk's office will be closing for two hours over the lunch hour for some election-related business. So we will put that up on Facebook and get that posted, just in case you guys need to know. Reminder, open enrollment starts tomorrow, 8:00 a.m. Our meetings are at 9:30, 11:00, no, wait a minute. Anyway, I sent you out an email. They're all over there tomorrow. The first one tomorrow was full. But there's openings in all the others. So any questions?
Do you have to go to the meeting or can you just go?
You don't have to go to the meeting. That's where you're going to find out all the good information, but you don't have to go.
Yeah, but I have you to tell me.
There is, it is an active enrollment, though. Anybody that does not go online, theirs ends December 31st. The only thing not affected by that would be capers, of course. Capers option of life insurance and the capers 457. Everything else, if you don't go on and actively choose it for next year, it will end on December 31st. We had Justin Dempsey with Next Tech out a couple of weeks back to go over certifications with, that are coming up for cybersecurity. All the department heads were, supervisors were requested to attend one of two different meetings that we had. We had good turnout. Keith showed up for one of them, which is great. And Justin wants to make sure that this isn't just something we talk about and think, okay, we'll get to, we'll get to it. So he's going to be back on Monday, October 28th. We intentionally picked a Monday. We're going to try to get it scheduled for right after a commission so that the commissioners can attend. Because it's extremely important for all levels to understand what we're going to be required to do in order to meet the guidelines and requirements placed by the state for us. So, and it's going to be an all-hands-on-deck kind of thing. It's not just something that this office has to do or this office has to do. Every office has to do it. And two more things. Jenny's back today. So she'll be working as she's able to tolerate until she's released back to full duty. She'll be in and out for some therapy, but otherwise, she's back in the office. So hopefully, she won't spend, have to spend too long filing. But we saved her less than.
Yeah.
And last is Public Works Director Recruitment. I gave you guys hard copies of job descriptions from other counties similar. And I know I gave them to Alex as well. So I'm just going to need some direction as to what you want to do with recruitment for that position. Any edit suggestions, changes to the existing job description we have? And if you want to just make changes on there? Or I can send you that electronically and you can make, change that way and get it to me and say, this is what we want. I can combine all three suggestions into one.
What kind of input?
He, yeah, he is the one, that job description that I said we currently have, that's the one that he edited.
Okay.
So that, that was his idea for...
But he hasn't seen those other ones?
No, he hasn't seen those other ones.
Okay.
I can forward it to him if you want. Hollywood County, Wiley County, Saline County, and Butler County, I think.
Yeah, I'd like your thoughts on some of these. I scanned through them. I've got some questions, but...
I think on mine, I've added some certifications and stuff like that.
Yeah.
That's basically required for the job anyway, so.
So if I could just, you know, maybe next Monday, we come back and decide what to go for. Do an extra session for me so that way we've got longer to talk about it and finalize the job description of where we're going to go and timeline for the recruitment and the interviews and stuff.
Yeah.
So can I get an extra spot on Monday?
Three of us will be here next Monday.
Perfect. That's all I have, unless you guys have questions for me. Sorry, I wanted to do your time, Ken.
Take it out of your face. Hello.
Hi. I thought that light kind of damaged that. Cory and Jeremy are here because they had a request on a vehicle that was damaged. And so I'm setting up, if you want to go ahead and do that, and that will save you some time instead of... Wait, not me completely.
Okey-dokey. As you're aware, with the recent loss of the shop truck due to the fire incident, we have been working with finance on best possible funding sources to replace that vehicle. We have found a used 2024 Dodge 4500 with 5,000 miles that comes equipped with the service body, air compressor, crane, welder slash generator from Master Tech Truck and Equipment at a cost of $190,337. We did pass out in front of you guys some different scenarios that we've come up with for funding that. One of them you'll see is, we had a previously approved CIP in an amount of $210,000 for that salt sand bunker. Cory and I, Cory and I have talked a lot about that. And with that lease, you know, there is some hesitancy there of putting that structure on that property. So I think, and pulling that back and kind of discussing that, looking at some other options there. And with the need to replace this truck, seems to be our, our best option for that.
And the one thing that both of us is concerned with, with putting that structure on Corbin's near property is, you know, they could pull the rug out from underneath their feet. And then we could move the structure, but we're going to be out of $60,000 to $80,000 concrete slab.
Yeah.
We can't move the concrete. So that's the only thing that kind of has that gremlin on your shoulder saying abandon ship, so. But we've kind of been looking for property, you know, around a geographical area over here off Interstate for hopefully future. But at this time, we both feel that the importance of this shop truck, it's pretty paramount. Winter's coming on, and that's basically a mobile mechanic shop. If we have motor grinders, flat tires, and snowdrifts, we've got to be able to get to it. And with that crane, it's, that's a very viable piece of equipment for our operations. And Jeremy knows a little bit more about that truck than I do. But with, with this purchase of this truck, we could actually in the future buy a basket for the crane. And we could utilize that truck doing other kinds of work, such as aerial trimming trees. Don't want to be too, too gung ho on trimming trees because I don't want the branches falling on the thing. So it's got like a 30, what was it?
It's a 29-foot reach on the crane. You add another five, five or six feet with the bed height, so around 33, 35 feet.
Yeah.
On that.
But it, it could be used other than just the shop. But to me, it's paramount that we, we get this, this shop truck replaced just because it's going to be a nightmare if we don't have a mobile, a mobile mechanics truck just for, you know, just a flat tire scenario on a motor grader. So then you got to have not just one employee, and you're going to have two or three taking a backhoe out with other trucks to haul the tire back in, so on and so forth. And put the spare on and yada, yada, yada. So I mean, it's, we've come up with multiple scenarios, but it's a viable tool in our resources down there. And I feel at this time, it kind of outweighs this salt sand bunker. I hate saying that, but it, it does. So that's just our opinion.
All right. So which one do you think is, are you recommending?
Well, we've laid out some different deals working with Tammy on that. And I know there was some ARPA funds that were left. So it would be, you know, up to commission if they'd want to apply those towards this purchase, which would help out some there and...
And I kind of thought, since we're coming down to the end of 2024, we have to have those funds allocated by the end of the year. And it's already mid-October. So that was kind of my thought behind that.
Yeah, I mean, we have to use them, so.
And then there's also some insurance money there as well.
Yes.
And part of the reason we're not coming just to ask for more CIP funds is because, you know, when we had our discussion, we looked at the next four years. And we have well over a million dollars being asked every single year. We're only transferring 500,000 a year. We aren't going to be able to sustain that. And we certainly can't just keep picking up these things that come along, not because it's anybody's fault or any issue. It's just, you know, things happen and we can't control that. But we do have to control how much we spend where the CIP fund won't be the tool that we want it to be in order to take care of the county's needs.
Yeah.
And so, so this was kind of a compromise and potentially still using the CIP, but utilizing dollars that aren't being utilized right now, probably won't be for a while. So the need for this could be put back on the table at a later time, whereas this truck, they felt like was important to do at this point.
Yeah. No, I agree. So I guess I'm a little confused on this. So you're, you're requesting the CIP with the ARPA funds at the 133, 31?
Right.
That would be correct.
So when you take the K-Camp dollars that we got back?
Okay.
In addition to the ARPA funds, what we had allocated as of 10/9 was that 22, 3. But we did have that landfill camera project. So Cory's group went back and looked at the cost that'll actually be. And there's additional 7,600 there. That's not going to be spent from that 20,000 that was allocated. So that would be added as part of the ARPA funds that would be utilized towards this. So then your net would be the 133. And then, of course, over on the side, there's still a possibility that we could recoup an additional almost $2,400 from the insurance company. We just have to actually purchase some of that replacement equipment. So I guess if we're purchasing it and then we're getting it back, those two wash each other out. So unless it's part of that specific 190 number already. I'm assuming it's 190 plus those? Or is the 190 include those things that they're...
No, no, the, the tools and stuff are not in that 190.
Okay. So, so those two just basically wipe each other out on whatever they spend versus what they get back in those 2,300. So it's not really a part of this.
And we didn't have any other requests or thoughts for that ARPA money?
We haven't had anything other than the other day, we had the, the ballards out here.
Yeah.
That was the only other thing that has come up. So, I mean, unless you've heard something, nobody has come to me other than this at this point. And, you know, we do have two months, but we do need to at least have the project started, a contract signed. And this would take care of both of those pieces should we choose to go ahead and allocate the remaining funds.
So you'd be 129, 9 of ARPA and 133 of CIP?
Correct.
Yeah, that's...
So of that 210, we would be recouping almost 77,000. That'll go back in the pool for any other projects.
Is that your motion to accept the 133, 31, 52?
Yeah, how do you want that? We're going to finish using up our funds.
Well, just allocate that specific dollar. So my recommended motion to you would be to approve the 2024 used Dodge shop truck for Public Works at a cost of 190,337, designating 29,930.81 from ARPA funds. And after the K-Camp insurance reimbursement, that would leave a remaining 133,031.52 that would come out of the CIP funds.
That's my motion.
Did you get that written? Well, it's recorded, so.
So moved.
All right. Second, all in favor?
All right.
Both same sign, motion carries.
So then I will have Cory bring, or send me over an authorization form for the CIP funds. And then I'll bring that back next week to have you guys sign.
How soon can you get the truck?
Probably pretty quick.
Yes, they have it on hand. I think the only thing they did not have would be that welder generator. So they would need to order that, get it installed onto the truck.
I would think within a month.
Thank you, commission.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, the next thing I have, Tony, mental health center contract for 2025. I did check the numbers. I did handwrite a couple of adjustments. And I cleared this with our legal counsel because it doesn't specifically state that half is paid at the end of January and half is paid at the end of July. And I wanted to make sure that that was clear when they got their documentation, so there were no issues. And it did say with an approximate total payment of, and I put with a total payment of because it's not an approximate amount. That's exactly what they were getting. So there are two contracts, and I just need the signatures from both of you and then the clerk, the deputy clerk, to attest it. And I do need both of them signed. I think it's how it's been written in the past because this used to be a levied fund.
Yeah.
And so when it's a levied fund, it wouldn't have been an exact dollar amount. And then I also have one from Big Lakes Developmental. And again, I checked the dollars, the 100,147. Did it have any issues with theirs? I will, if I would, could get you to sign it, I will have a legal look at it today before it gets sent or is approved to be picked up to just ensure that there are no issues. Because it did come in on Friday, and so since we were not here on Monday. The other thing they did have is a letter. And it is a letter where you support Big Lakes requesting an application of $10,000 for operating grant on their transportation assistance from July 1st, 25 to 26. And again, if I could get signatures from, from you guys to approve a letter of support. And then the last thing I have are the year-to-date expenditures for September. As you know, we didn't have these ready last time because we had something happen with the financial system that we had to make sure that the numbers were coming across in the right time period. And so the ones in blue are the ones that have exceeded the 75%. Special Bridge, again, that's cyclical based on the timing of the projects taking place. And so I don't have any concerns on that. However, we would keep an eye on that to determine whether we would need to have any budget amendments by the end of November. The library, again, the timing of the distribution. So no issues with that one. Economic Development, again, timing of when the money goes out. So there's no issues, no concerns from the financial standpoint on these. However, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any of them.
I don't have any questions.
Okay, and then on the second page, the HME building. And again, you know, that's because we transferred those dollars into the CIP fund.
Yeah.
So if there's no questions on the expenditure budget activity, I'll push it over to the revenue budget activity. And again, this is just letting you know where we're at based on what we budgeted and what's come in at this point in time. Are there any questions on the revenue budget activity? Nope. Okay. And then the last one is your general fund by department. So this just shows you where each department is in relationship to that 75% mark at the end of September. So GIS planning is again over that 75% mark. But as we've talked about in the past, they do have that pictometry cost early in the year. And so that does push it over. And you can see it's getting closer to that mark of where we would expect it to be as the year has gone by. So again, no concerns with any of those. Do you have any questions on the general funds? Okay. And then this page just, of course, gives you each department by month in case there's any that you see as a flag on you may have questions. So if you want to review those and if you have any questions specifically on a specific month or a specific department, please reach out to me. I'd be happy to sit down and answer any of your questions. Okay, I'm good. Thank you. All right, and I think that was all I had, but let me go check. Yep, that's all I have this morning. Rick's going to talk to you a little bit about it. I've got a couple of things I need to talk to you about.
Yeah, he's not, he's at AUSA.
What you have in front of you is a request for doing some drone photography here pretty quickly during fall colors. We did seek bids on the back. You will see on the back and front cover. I think the aerial photography will help us. These are licensed drone pilots. We're recommending Deer Creek drone for $377.13 which will invoice. And if it's approved, we'll probably do it this weekend.
Where's Deer Creek at?
Where are they located? They're in Gary County. They're at Clark's Creek Road. Oh, White City, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Yeah.
He works for the Cast Department of Transportation. They're at 77 I-70, the owner. He does a lot of drone photography for KDOT. Cast Department of Transportation, that's where he works at full-time.
On the one that says 10 images?
Yes.
Are they both going to be 10 images?
Yes. We get 10 from within the city and 10 in the county. And then I told them we'd just take the raw photos so we could work them up.
It's very pretty at this time.
Yes. And just to give you an example, some of the shots, we'd probably go out beyond Taylor Road, shoot I-70 coming back. That would include that. We do Flint Hills, the river, Milford Lake, a couple of them. Probably go up to the Causeway area, the dam, the gathering ponds, things like that.
Well, I'd make a motion to go with them. Deer Creek, Deer Creek, 9, 377, 13 cents.
Second, all in favor? Both same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
John Montgomery sent me an email and got in touch. And we need to go ahead and sign a lease for another year. It's not going to change. It's going to be exactly the same as it was in the past. So I think that is a decision that you guys would need to make. And Betsy's not, because we're clients of Betsy's. She's not going to be able to do that. Is that right?
Yeah, conflict.
Conflict, yeah.
So that's what's happened every year is I conflict at this.
Yeah.
And it's the same ways that we always...
Yeah, it's exactly the same, same amount. It's $1,500 a month.
I'm good with extending that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Building still for sale?
I think so. We haven't had anybody looking at it lately. There's a new business in there that is a, I can't remember what it is now. It might be a counselor, massage, something like that. So, okay. Another thing I wanted to ask you guys about is getting cell phones for Rick and I that would be under the office instead of using our own personal cell phones. And then I talked to Crystal and talked to Tammy both, and we would go ahead and get them through Verizon under the government rate with the county.
Yeah, I'm good with that. I know you guys use your phones a lot.
Yeah.
Make a motion for that?
Oh, I'll make a motion, good cell phones.
Second, all in favor? Both same sign, motion carries.
We do an ad in the Manhattan Visitors Guide, and they do an ad in our Visitors Guide. So I was going to let you guys know that I'd request that we would do that again this year, $800.
For you guys to have an ad, too?
We do an ad in theirs and they do an ad in ours.
Oh, we're designing ours?
No, ours are less than theirs are.
I'm going to work it out. So it's just, we said the phone, you just hire me. You know, it's a wash. That's what I would do.
Could you ask them that?
I can do that. Okay.
Just trade, trade them back. Part of them regional.
Yeah, I agree. Oh, and I talked to Tammy and Jamie about contacted the hotel for tourism conference, and they went ahead and sent a copy of the, the invoice, basically. So we'll be able to take a check. If you guys sign it, we'll be able to take a check down with us and pay for it when we get there. So I'll take the check in the tax exempt form with us for tourism conference. I've got meetings on the 20th, and so we'll be leaving that afternoon. And then we will be back on, we'll drive back on Thursday and we'll be in the office on Friday. I have another thing that we can talk about more in detail later on. We've got a media group, Ry Media Group is going to be coming in. They're going to have a retreat here, and they're also going to be working with Spooky Hills Public Television. So they're going to be here also, and the producers are going to be here. And so they'll be here for two nights, three days. So I better get in contact with them and get a little more information. They are requesting three hotel room nights, or three hotel rooms for two nights.
And what are they doing?
They're doing a retreat, and they're going to use Gary County as their background for the, the TV show and some of the other things they're doing.
I want to do, I have a time.
There'll be six room nights. Yeah. So we can talk about it. We've got time. I just wanted to put it on your radar. So, and I think, I think that's all.
Thank you.
Drone invoice. Teresa said it has sales tax, so make sure that sales tax is removed.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good morning. Just our weekly stats. We had quite a few accidents. I think a lot of them are car deer accidents. We had eight accidents this week and none that had any injuries. Ninety-six traffic stop, 15 tickets, 108 seal process papers. We're averaging about 90, just a little over 90 in the inmates right now. I did talk to Cory a little bit in the hallway. We're still slowly making progress on getting this, the line portion of the, of the sewage issues figured out. We've had C and K out. They're still waiting for their equipment that can give us an actual location with underneath the building as to where these crack lines are at. They've identified a couple of crack lines. They've identified a couple of lines that have settled. And accessing that through the training room, going out towards the yard. Unfortunately, their equipment right now that they have doesn't have the capability with the sensors on to tell us exactly where those, that damage is at. So they're still working on that. He said hopefully they'll be back sometime this week when they get their equipment updated so we can find the exact location to determine if we're going to have to tear up the floor in the training room or outside in the yard to fix that problem. I thank you guys for fixing the other leak that was just approved upstairs in the crawl space. There's obviously some pipe issues there as well. He said we are still unable to get a quote for the piping in the, in the administrative area. So he's still working on that, trying to find a plumber to figure out if we can get a quote. Thermal Comfort Air did come in and get us an assessment to determine whether or not we can go to PVC, because there's a requirement for them to do some work before. It's, it's not, it's not a huge amount. It's under a couple thousand dollars to do what they have to do, which will allow us, when we do get an estimate, to put that PVC piping in that area. It's just trying to find the people to do it. That's the problem right now.
You can explain that to the employees and why they're spread out and.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Every day I talk to Cory, I go and talk to the commit, or the staff and let them know.
Because I don't want them to think we're not doing anything.
No, no, they, they know, and they, they know that it's not us.
And this has been going on for years.
Yeah, absolutely.
This should have been addressed years ago.
Well, exactly. I mean, it's not something that.
I just want to make sure they don't think that we're not doing anything.
No, no, they, they understand that completely. And I've told them a bunch of times, every time I talk to Cory, we're waiting on outside parties.
Yeah.
We can't do anything about that.
This is nothing that we're holding up. And, and, you know, there's no sense of us fixing everything and then it happening again. And so, as long as they understand that.
I'm not in a rush to get moved back in there and deliver things.
Well, no, I mean, it would be, it would be very foolish.
I did want to address with you guys, I'm looking to potentially hire a part-time IT person. And it's a, we had two vacant, or we have two vacant IT, or part-time positions now. There were people that were doing accreditation process. They're gone, and we have a sergeant that's doing accreditation process for us. So I had a couple of vacant, vacated part-time positions. And I would like to hire an IT person to help Sagar, because he has a lot of things that he has to do on a daily basis to where his help desk messages are something that he has trouble keeping up with. He has to monitor all the incoming stuff on the, on the servers and make sure they're not getting hacked. All that stuff that he has to do as an IT director. But I'd like to be able to utilize some of that part-time money for those two positions to hire a part-time person in IT. It's going to be 15, 18 hours a week. And hopefully we can get somebody for the, you know, it's a, it's a part-time IT person. They're going to have to come in and train them quite a bit, because the pay, the pay rate is, is pretty low. Obviously, it's a part-time position. So maybe, we may not even find anybody to fill that position. I think they're coming in under an admin one position, so it's like 15 something an hour.
I mean, it, I don't, I do not see why one department needs more than one IT person.
I could give you more detail specifically as to what Sagar does on a daily basis.
Well, I know the city, the city, for the whole entire city, has only two people. And Eighth Judicial District has, I mean, for the whole Eighth Judicial District, only has one.
I understand that, but I'm not sure if they're running servers like we are related to like all of our backup camera systems, all of our camera system servers.
Police department is.
Well, they use the cloud, don't they?
I don't know.
If they use, I think they use a cloud big server where it's not the same as using an actual external server that they have to monitor constantly to make sure that it's not getting hacked into.
How long are you planning on, if you did this, how long?
It's budgeted for 25, but I can't even guarantee we're going to find somebody. So, you know, if we get somebody in there part-time and can get, we've actually tried multiple times to find staff that we currently have on duty that would be willing to take on some of those help desk messaging, messaging stuff to correct some of those issues. We've had some of the deputies and supervisors that have tried to do it, just don't have time on their, on their daily schedule to keep up with the monitoring, because a lot of it has to do with monitoring the incoming stuff that's, that's happening on the servers. So you have to actually physically monitor that to make sure that there's not issues with firewall, like obstructions and stuff like that. So we've tried, we tried to get Tammy from the corrections side to do it part-time too, and, and just part of her duties, but it's just that, it's that busy. So I'll look into it again, and I'll talk to Sagar and have him give me a specific detailed list of what he's doing so that you guys have a little more explanation. He sent me once a day about the things he's working on, and I'll forward it to you, let you see what he's got on his plate. And then we can discuss that some other time. We have one person in DRE school right now, which is the Drug Recognition Program. It, it assists them when they're working DUI cases or even dealing with people on the street. You know what a DRE is. They recognize impairment a lot better than the standard DUIs, that they're, they're drug detection. So we've got one officer that's going through that. It's a pretty extensive program for him to be able to do that. He'll be able to come out and recognize, you know, if we have somebody in mental health crisis or a, a crisis due to narcotics, he can tell us kind of what they're on and help out to get the treatment that they need. It also works good for DUI enforcement. He's a, he's a great DUI officer as it is, but now having the DRE, I think it would give him the ability to make more cases related to drug identification through intoxication. We have two deputies graduating from the academy on the 25th. So we'll be going down there for that. Most recently, this last week or so, we had been to quite a few events. We were attending the Monster Met's at Milford State Park. We handed out candy out there for the trunk or treat portion. The turnout was amazing. There's a lot of people. I think I handed out eight giant bags of candy at the time that we were out there. We went to the ribbon cutting and the reopening of Walmart. We were out there for that event. We were at the groundbreaking for the Early Childhood Center. We did High Five Fridays at Sheridan Elementary School. Last Friday, we're going to do it again next Friday, I believe. So we just basically have about eight officers that show up at the school in the morning during our, our shift change, and we just greet the kids as everyone in the school for High Five Friday. And then on Saturday, we also went out to the 290 exit on the interstate, stood on the bridge, because the Midwest K-9 unit was coming through, and they were delivering a vest from a fallen canine from highway patrol. So we went out there, attended that event, you know, waved them through. Other than that, I, I would like to give Mike Harris and Acorn Resorts a little heads up and a little props, because they, we've hosted Desert Snow Training in Gary County for about three years now. And every time that we do that, with us hosting that event, Mike has provided us free access to the conference center. So there's over 75 officers at a time that come to that event. And in hosting, and, and the number of officers that we do get to come to the event, we in turn actually get two to three positions, depending on how many people we get, for free. So with Mike actually bringing those people in, not charging the desert snow for that conference center, it's allowed us to have at least six to nine officers trained within the last three years, free of charge, just for him doing that. So I wanted to give him a heads up and a prop for that, because he, he, he doesn't have to do it, because it is a private organization, but it is a private business that trains tons of officers across the country. And for him doing that and being gracious, it actually benefits all of us. So unless you guys have any questions, that's all I have.
All right, thank you.
We already did a review and update. I am too. We're going to go on executive session after.